Good evening. This is the August 21st meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we hear any applications tonight, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If anyone is here for a hearing, uh... 1724, that application has been withdrawn. So the first hearing tonight will be 1725, and that's at 118 Highland Avenue in Wallingford. Anyone here to present the application, please come up to the desk.
Applicant seeks front yard of 32 feet where 40 feet is required and 40 feet exist to construct a front porch and attached garage. Parcel is irregularly shaped with three sides, including one front and two sides. Applicant received side yard variance in September 1992 to construct bedroom addition. Building permit was issued May 2017 to enclose existing carport and convert to living space. In order to construct garage, pending decision of the ZBA, applicant must continue and complete existing carport renovation in order to obtain building permit to construct the proposed additional garage to avoid need for a special exception for added garage area.
Good evening.
Hi.
Would you please explain to the commission what you'd like to do?
We would like to add on...
Okay, excuse me. I need your name for the record. Thank you.
Sure. Robin Becroft.
Can you spell your last name?
And your address as well.
Thank you.
118 Highland Ave.
Okay. Pull that microphone a little closer to you and speak up so we can hear what you're saying.
All right. We would like to add a garage on... We've added a carport... We've turned our carport into an addition, which is a mudroom and an additional room behind it. We would like to add a garage on the end of the house. We have a ranch. It's kind of in the ridges area. It's on Highland Ave. We'd like to add a garage onto it and a front porch in the front. We're also going to add a deck in the back, but that doesn't need a variance. We want the garage to be a two-car garage, and we're trying to stay, you know, within our boundaries. So that's why we're trying to come forward. We're trying not to need a variance on the side yard also. So that's why we're trying to come forward, so we could only need one variance.
Okay, the garage is going to be on the... As you face the house, on the left of the side?
On the right.
On the right side of the house, okay. And you heard what Mr. Rice said about you need to finish construction on the... You know that?
The inside of it, yep.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishes to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission for discussion and motions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application with the stipulation that before the going for their building permit to construct the garage, that they're going to need to complete the existing carport renovation as what the staff comments.
So...
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Disjardins.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Chairman Bernie.
Yes.
Okay, your motion. Your application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next application is 1726 Kids R Us Child Care and Learning Center, 109 Cheshire Road. Anyone here to present that application?
This application is to operate child daycare center at 309 Main Street. This office has received building dimensions and identified parking and place space, yet to date, application is incomplete with no information regarding intended enrollment, design staff and client parking pickup and drop-off locations and traffic flow, and/or any planned site modifications. Please note comments submitted from fire marshal for necessary approval and submission of fit-out plans prior to occupancy and issue of CO. This office recommends applicant clearly demonstrate the above before any action is considered on the special exception application.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. How many children do you have at the...
Right now where I am?
Ma'am, you have to give your name for the record.
I'm sorry.
Mary Hager, 109 Cheshire Road.
Thank you. How many children are it's...
Where I'm presently located, I have license for 48, but we've never been over 30.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Disjardins?
I had a question actually for Amy. Just looking at the staff comments here on this application, the staff recommends that we receive a clear demonstration that the fire marshal's requirements have been met before moving forward. Is that something that has been done at this time? Is there anything we need to ask the applicant for at this time?
As far as the fire marshal goes, that's typical standard procedure. So that will need to happen certainly anyway, or condition that they meet the comments of the fire marshal. The applicant just needs to demonstrate to you all the other facets of the business rather than just the location, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And so you have... You're going to be licensed for 48?
That's where I am now.
Where you are now.
Where I'm applying to go. I don't know how many I'll be licensed for. It probably would be less than that. Until it's set up, it's really hard to give a number when the state comes in and, you know, gives you a number.
Okay. How about... How many staff are you planning on having?
Right now I have four staff, including myself.
You have four staff, including yourself. So you have three plus... And... Are you going to be doing any modifications to the site?
No.
The crappy lady site?
No, none.
How about a fenced-in area for the kids to play outside?
Outside fenced-in area, yes.
That's going to be in...
In the back.
In the back?
Mm-hmm.
And hours of operation?
I'm open right now from 7:00 to 5:30, but we're always there till 6:00 because there's always someone traveling late.
I think I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Vehicles entering the site, approximately how many people... What hours of the day will you be seeing the most traffic go through there into that plaza?
Right now my children that come in, they're all over from 7:00 until maybe 9:30. It depends, you know, if they're part-time, if they're full-time. It depends on the child.
Now, is there a designated drop-off point there, or do they park and then get out of the car and walk in?
Yes, there's one in the front and there's one in the back also.
Okay. Is there one separate one for the entrance and then one pickup, or do you use both?
I could use both. I mean, I could do it in the front or I could do it in the back. There are two entrances.
I'm just concerned about the flow of traffic in terms of going in and out of the parking lot. But is there... There's no exit in the back, correct?
No.
There's just a pick... So that would be around the playground area in that particular area?
Right. There's some pavement and then there's grass in the back.
So they would be able to... If they pick up in the back, would they be able to turn around and then come back out again?
Yes.
Do you have a list of new people that are coming in? Do you see your enrollment expanding more than what you mentioned tonight?
I've been where I am since 2009, and it's never been over 30, so.
And it's a Monday to Friday operation?
Yes.
What about holidays?
We're usually closed the major holidays.
Do you follow the normal school calendar during the year, or...
We don't.
You don't? It's just every day?
I have some parents that are in, you know, nurses, they have to get to work. We don't follow the school schedule.
Okay.
Some places do, I don't.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hyde?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple quick questions. How many parking spaces are there at that property?
In the front, there are six, and in the back, there could probably be eight.
Okay. And your staff... You have four staff members, including yourself. Do you all drive and park there separately?
One does not drive. She's dropped off and picked up.
Okay. So you have three staff members that park there separately. And then you say that you have approximately 30 children. I think you...
That's the most I've ever had, and I'm licensed for 48, so.
Okay.
We try to keep it smaller, more personable.
How many families do you have?
Some of them have two children, some of them have three.
Yeah, and I'm asking that because I assume that probably a more accurate way of figuring out how many people will be coming in and out is based upon how many families are going... You have as opposed to how many children you have, because I assume you have some families that have two or three kids.
Right, we do.
So that's why I asked how many families... How many families you have?
When we were at 30, so probably 26, about that.
Okay. And you said, when a family drops a child off, how long do they generally stay?
Depends on the parent. If they want to talk, they're there longer. If not, in the morning, it's usually pretty quick because they have to get to work.
Okay. On average, five, 10 minutes?
Five or 10 minutes.
In the back, I think you said you were going to put a play area in the back?
Mm-hmm.
The... When the children use that play area, will they have to walk over the parking lot to get to the play area?
Yes, a short way. There's a door there and they walk down and go into the play yard.
Do you have any procedures in place that will, I guess, avoid those children having to cross that parking lot when cars are coming in and out?
Yes, the supervision of the adults. They also have something they hold on to, so.
I don't think I have any further questions at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have...
Go right ahead.
Where are you located now?
98 South Turnpike Road.
98 South Turnpike and the office buildings down there, that's where you are?
condo complex.
Yeah, okay. And this is going to be a upgrade?
Yeah, we're not visible at all. A lot of people don't even know we exist there.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone that wishes to speak against it? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion, et cetera.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this application for better use of the property and keeping in character with the area.
Second.
Discussion, do we want to also notate the hours of operation in this application so it doesn't exceed any or disclose any, or you want to go back and amend it, or what do we want to do?
Amend it.
Amend the... May I amend the motion, or how do you want to do that?
I could withdraw the motion if you would like.
And if you can, go back and...
And just add...
Add the dates or the hours of operation, the capacity and days of operation.
Exactly what you said.
Well, hold on.
Hold on. Go on.
She doesn't know. The state's going to tell her how many people she can have, little kids can have in there. The state will regulate that. I mean, I don't know if we... Amy, is that in our jurisdiction, or is the state going to be over and above what we have to say?
The state will tell her what her enrollment capacity can be. However, we cannot make a decision based on no scenario. So she's got to give you an idea, at least with what she's starting with, if she's intending on moving now. But the state will dictate that, as will they give guidelines in terms of what she needs for protection of the children in a play area and such.
Does she still have to come in front of planning and zoning?
She does not.
It's just us.
Special exception takes the place of a change of use in this circumstance for nursery school or daycare rather than planning and zoning change of use.
So, Amy, all those things that you just mentioned, is that part of the fire marshal's...
The fire marshal's concerned about the fit-outs relative to, you know, entrance and egress and such. Our concerns need to be that she's clearly demonstrated she has the parking and the drop-off and the pickups for the children. I don't know. I would like to see entertained a little more whether or not there's more than one point of entry into that parking lot. There could potentially be a backlog. What do we do with people waiting for a parking space? Those types of things are what you should be considering, and the hours certainly. But the state will dictate the maximum enrollment and the code that she needs to comply with in terms of child safety and such.
I think the state will also be interested in the ingress and egress of the... So that will be up to them to dictate to her.
That's going to be fire code. Again, she's already demonstrated that she has two points of entry. Perhaps we can consider one a point of drop-off and one a point of pickup, for example, to eliminate the backlog willy-nilly in two areas, potentially at the height of drop-off and pickup time when children are wandering and being presented in.
You want to reword your motion, Mr. Rice?
Second.
You want to reword your motion?
To include...
To include the hours of operation and the elimination of the rear entry.
Okay, we'll just add that in, okay?
Hear what you're saying.
Okay, I'll withdraw it. Make a motion to accept the application with the hours of operation. And what was the other one? Oh, the entrance.
The... And your hours of operation are what?
Seven to 5:30, but we're always there till 6:00.
We're also including the rear and front, aren't we? One is a drop-off point and one is a pickup point.
Could be that, yes.
Is that in the motion, Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Second.
All right, can you just go over the motion, like, because I can't hear it.
We added the hours of operation. We added the front and...
The front drop-off?
Yeah, the pickup and drop-off location. And basically, it's approval with the... Without changing the characteristics of the neighborhood and that should do it.
You second... Mr. Disjardins, do you second it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, motion to approve, Mr. Disjardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
You're all set.
Thank you.
I think. Next application is 17027 New Life Church Incorporated. They don't have a special exception as well for childcare.
This is application to operate child daycare center at 7 North Turnpike Road. This office has received proposed enrollment, yet incomplete application regarding any proposed aspects of the site other than those formally associated with the former use, the bank. Application does not identify designated staff and client parking, pickup and drop-off locations and traffic flow, and/or any planned site modifications. Please note, comments submitted by fire marshal for necessary approval and submission to fit-out plans prior to occupancy and issuance of any CO. This office recommends applicant clearly demonstrate the above before any action be considered on the special exception application.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. My law office is in Meriden. I represent the applicant New Life Church. To my left is Pastor Will Marotti, the pastor of the church, who will also participate in the presentation. Just to begin, before I go through the presentation, I believe the comments that you've read are dated August 14th. We've submitted a package of revised plans that's showing drop-off and traffic flows and parking, and also an internal layout of the site after those comments. I think those are around the 17th or so of August. So I believe you have much work before you this evening on which to review. So the property is at 7 North Turnpike Road. It is 51,775 square feet in size, 1.19 acres, and it's located in the CA-12 district. It is currently developed with a 4,707 square-foot brick one-story building, and according to the assessor's records, that was built in 1968. It was most recently operated as a bank with access both off of North Turnpike Road to the east and Colonial Lane to the west. There's two access points to the site. Now, the applicant proposes to occupy the site pursuant to a lease for the purpose of operating the Carver Academy preschool. Now, you'll notice on the application, Mr. Chairman, that we had indicated an enrollment of 65, and Pastor Will, who again will participate in the presentation, indicates that that number, our request, is reduced to 51. So that is down the enrollment capacity. Looking at the layout, what's needed for the benefit of the children, 51, seems to be a number that works far better than 65 at this point. Now, Section 9.1 of your regulations spell out the considerations that are important in this type of presentation or application. Here, the use will take primarily within the existing building. So you have the building there. You have the layout of the parking spaces. There is a drop-off to the front. It can also be used as the pickup area, again at the later time of the day when the pickup takes place. There are 39 parking spaces on this site, and it would be a one-tenant operation, so you're not having a mixture of different tenant, different operations, different traffic flows, et cetera. So it'd be the one operation. 39 spaces, 36 are original, regular parking spaces and three handicapped, more than sufficient to meet staff needs and those of parents bringing their children to the site. The two designated ingress and egress locations reduce the traffic flow for either driveway so you don't have all of the traffic being accessing the site from one location. And you'll notice in the plan that we've submitted to you, Mr. Chairman, there's a proposed play area to the east, which abuts the residentially zoned property. To the east is a property which is zoned residential, and this, we believe, is a far better use of the property in a CA-12 zone. This use kind of dovetails to the nature of some of the residential flavor that you see to the east. Again, in a CA-12 zone, as you know far better than I do, there are certain uses permitted by right, such as taverns, clubs, adult uses, rental equipment operations, all which are permitted, which would not seem to meld well, and yet they're permitted by right. We're here under special exception. So Pastor Will's going to explain to you about the nature of the operation, what's envisioned, and hopefully answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. We've operated Carver preschool for seven years.
Excuse me, Pastor, could you identify yourself with your full name?
Yes, Will Marotti. I'm the senior pastor.
And your address, too?
344 High Hill Road.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. So we've operated Carver preschool for about seven years up until now. It's been in our, what was formerly our Meriden campus, located on B Street. In Meriden, we recently sold that property last year and have been looking for a spot to relocate the daycare to. One of the things we looked at with our architect was Meyer Design up in Hartford. Once, they gave us several options for the floor plan. We looked at the options and picked the one we thought would be best for the students, for the staff, and we've already calculated the square footage, so we know that we will be applying for exactly 51 children to the state. And the state's already been notified that we are hoping to relocate the daycare from our Meriden property to the Wallingford location. Hours of operation are very daycare-ish, and that would be 6:00 AM to 5:30 PM. We have various drop-off times because some of the children are full-time, some of the children are part-time. So the heaviest hours of drop-off would be between 7:30 and 9:00 AM, and then between 4:00 and 5:30 for pickup, but they are somewhat staggered. The building is very beautiful. It has an enclosed lobby area. If you're familiar with it, overhanging walkway is enclosed, so it really, it's well-suited. Probably better suited for a daycare than a bank, but I didn't design it. We currently have nine full-time staff, three part-time staff. We may have to make a couple of additions to part-time staff, but no more full-time additions for the number of children it would be applying for to the state of Connecticut. And our schedule is really weather-related, other than a few major holidays that we close and the week between Christmas and New Year, so we can clean the carpeting. It's really... We're open except on inclement days that schools would normally be closed, so the parents have a consistent way to know that they have a place for their child so that they can work. We've got about 35 families that are participating right now. Our current enrollment at the B Street location is 45 students, so we're looking to add another six to that, and that'll be another maybe two, three families at best. We will be having a, as Attorney Sennaviva mentioned, we will be having a playground fenced-in. That's a state requirement, so you can't get around that. There is an area where the kids will be walking on the parking lot to get to the playground, but there will be no traffic through there at all. There will be no traffic allowed on that side of the building, and none needed because we have great access points on the other side of the building. That's about it?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that Pastor Will has indicated to me that they've looked at a number of locations throughout the town to find something that works, not only for them, but also works for the location, that this site seemed to work well. not only for them, but also works for the location, that this site seemed to work well. We did go to town staff very early in the process before we submitted an application. Didn't hear any, any negative feedback from the location. And I can tell you that in terms of the current operation in Meriden, it has been years in operation without incident. So it's a well-run operation, and I think it would, it would serve that location well. Thank you.
You mentioned a playground on the east side of the property, that's the portion that faces the YMCA, is that so?
Uh, it's actually, um... It's actually not facing the Y, it's facing a, uh... I believe a hedgerow of some, some shrubs, and there's a, I believe, a residential property next door to it, but there's a, somewhat of a screen on the side of it because of some shrubbery.
On the Colonial, is it Colonial Lane that sits there?
It's, it would be on the opposite side of Colonial Lane. It would be, it'd be north of the building, not south of it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
Uh, just two questions. I see, I know you have the entrance, the driveway entrance on, off of Colonial Lane also, but the only entry for drop-off and pick-up, pickup will be in the front of the building, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no back entryway?
There is a back, a back ingress that will be used only for handicap purposes, handicap-accessible purposes, and for the kids to be able to get out into that, into the area. But we'd like to keep all of the check, there'll be a check-in station.
Okay.
So we're very security-conscious, we want to make sure that we're able to monitor the parents in and out of the building, so we don't have any problems with mistaken releases.
Right, perfect. And then my other question, this may just be curiosity, but is the vault remaining?
We're actually keeping the vault.
Okay.
There's a good reason for that, because of the millions of dollars we'll be bringing in from the parents. We want it at the safe place. But it, it goes in line with our motto, and our new motto is, "Your kids are safe with us." So... The safe, the safe is going to remain, as far as we know, the tenant has, has, the landlord, the owner of the property has no plans to remove it, but it will be closed and safely secured.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
Mr. Rice?
Well, I think you answered the question when you said the tenant. You're, you're not planning to purchase this parcel, this is being leased?
Not at this time, it's a five-year lease we've entered with the owner.
It's five years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because you know, when I was reading the newspaper, which isn't always accurate, there were some indications there that this was like a temporary place for about two years or so, is...
Well, uh, no, it certainly will be for five. We'll reassess it four years. There is the possibility that, that we were approved two years ago to build a facility on our Wallingford campus, which is at three fifty High Hill Road. Because of cost and, um... Really, because of cost, we've elected to not do that. At, at four years into it, if, if we've got a long waiting list and, and we cannot utilize that property to grow, we may at that point in time come back before, I guess, planning would, would be the proper body. We would come back to planning and ask to reinstitute that plan that has already been approved for the Wallingford parcel. And it will certainly be five years, as determined the lease is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. What are the ages?
Ages are infant through three years old.
Three, three years. And, um... Really, I don't see a problem with parking. I mean, you guys got plenty of parking, and, and you're going to use the front for drop-off and pickup, which... But the, you had made the comment that you're not going to want cars going around the... If we're looking at the front, the right side, go to the back. Are you guys going to block that off, or what are you doing?
I mean, we'll put pylons up. You know, we use that now in our B Street location to direct traffic, traffic cones, and little men with stop flags.
Yeah, no, no, I, you know, I, I see what you're working towards to keep the kids safe, so somebody doesn't drive. I was just curious if you were doing away with that, or if you were...
It'll still be there, we'll block, as I said, we'll block it off. And of course, there's always adult supervision with the kids, so, you know, the kids will never be outside by themselves. And they, and they also go out in smaller groups. It's not like, you know, we don't have them all go at the same time, so it's, it's a more manageable flock.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Disjardins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to clarify the, the traffic flow plan on the site, based on your comments about if I'm standing on North Turnpike Road and looking at the front of the building, on the right side, uh, on the August sixteenth map that I'm looking at, has traffic sort of going in and going to the right of the building, in between the, the play area and the building, and then going all the way around and exiting. Is, is that not planned anymore?
We've kind of modified that plan. We're not, we're not going to have them circulate through. There's really no need to, there's enough, there's ample parking without doing that. And, and all of the, the kids will be drop-off, you know, again, parents will be hanging out for a couple of minutes to drop them off, so we really won't need to use that whole space with that circular motion.
So if I am, can I drop off my child in the morning? If I come in that North Turnpike Road entrance, I would go to the left, then, and find a place to park?
Yes.
Okay, and on average, because I know you have a, a current location, do you have most parents dropping their children off around the same time? I'm just trying to get a sense of if there's going to be any congestion in the parking.
They're staggered. The center opens at six, but our heaviest drop-off time is between seven-thirty and nine. So they're really, they're really stretched out from six to nine, so it's, it's not, not too burdensome.
Okay, so there's not usually a time when you have like ten cars stacked up in the morning?
They won't be towered very much, no.
Okay, all right, excellent, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Mr. Heine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually kind of like the traffic flow the way you have it now, personally, because I... And, and other people up here may disagree with me. But I could foresee a situation where you have a couple of cars coming in at the same time off of North Turnpike Road in the morning during drop-off, and you have another parent backing up out of one of the front spaces there, and, and that car's backing up, and the, the two cars coming in from North Turnpike Road then have to stop and wait for that car to back up and turn around and come out, and next thing you know, you have a little bit of a backup on North Turnpike Road. Whereas if all the cars came in and had to go right around the building in the same direction, you wouldn't really run into that, that problem. So I, I sort of actually like the way that you, you have it set up now. One of my questions for you, though, is, um... You have the walk, then there's a shaded area showing the walkway between the preschool and the play area.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be, is, is that actually going to be marked as like a crosswalk?
Striped.
Yes, sir. Okay, good, good, I like that. The other thing is, um... The, the, um... You have a good-sized play area there, do you know how close that's going to end up being towards the road? I mean, I, I, it's kind of hard to tell from the, from the map.
I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the scale is, but it, it's no closer than the parking spaces.
Yeah, oh, okay. Are you going to, you, and I know you're, you're leasing this property, but do you plan on putting any sort of trees or hedges up between the road and, and the play area at all?
It's not in the current plan, no.
Okay, and just, that's just a curiosity I had, that's all.
Maybe some flowers.
Well, that'd be nice.
There are flower beds in front of the building that have been coming to disrepair, you know. We'll clean it up a little bit and...
Well, that'd be nice, I appreciate that. I don't think I have any further questions, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one. As with the other daycare, we're, we're going to be putting stipulations if this is approved. And you're okay just with the time, six to five-thirty? Or do you run late, like to six o'clock?
Well, there, there could be certainly a case where a parent's stuck in traffic or something. I mean, it's never, never later than six.
Right, I understand that, that's why I was asking, just...
Good question.
And, um... And your employee thing, I mean, you've got plenty of parking on this site, as far as I'm concerned, I believe this. And with the two places to get in and out and the traffic light there, if they went on on Colonial Lane, I think you're fine there, too. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wants to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and open it to the commission for motions, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this application. The stipulations of the hours of operation, six AM to six PM. And, uh... Well, the state's going to stipulate, he says, Pastor Will said fifty-one children, but the state will, uh, end up dictating that, but we could put the fifty-one children, fifty-one children.
Pretty safe bet.
Okay. So move.
Second?
Motion to approve, Mr. Disjardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next application is seventeen twenty-eight. Uh, fourteen Research Parkway. The... GKN Aerospace.
Applicant syncs variances to erect signage at fourteen Research Parkway. Applicant is proposing a one-hundred-and-fifty-five square foot of signage where maximum one-twenty-five square feet of total signage is permitted. Proposal includes three ground signs, one main sign, and two directional signs, and two wall signs, main entrance, and rear shipping signs. Sign regulations permit one ground sign, which must be located ten feet from property boundary. Variance requests are for total allowed sign area, total number of permitted ground signs, and to allow ground sign two feet from property line. Applicant has applied and received permit approval for forty-six point twenty-five square foot main entrance wall sign, leaving seventy-eight point seventy-five square feet of available allowable signage. This office can support the addition of one-directional ground sign on Carpenter Lane entrance, as parcel is a corner lot with two points of entry. Applicant is proposing to move existing ground sign, therefore reducing the current setback in roach, in approachment. This office would suggest reducing the size of the rear wall sign and Carpenter Lane directional sign, while eliminating second directional sign, eliminating the need for one variance, and reducing the request for another variance. That's a lot.
That's a mouthful.
Just state your name and address for the applicant, please, whoever's going to give the presentation.
My name is Robert, my name is Robert Kushba, I'm with Sign Pro, sixty Westfield Drive, Plansville, Connecticut. I'm here to present the sign program to you for GKN. With me is Joe Rampon, he's the Development and Operations Manager for GKN.
Thank you, you want to explain your, uh... Your application to us?
Well, first, as far as a little bit of the background goes, uh, GKN has a branding guideline book that they follow. They have over sixty facili... Oh, they have over sixty facilities around the world, and they try to keep them all standardized and uniform. So that's how these signs have developed. You know, they look a little bit, uh... Different than other signs, you know, especially when we get to directional signs, you'll see. So they control the proportion, the amount of white space around the copy. So if we were to make this monument sign taller, we'd also have to make it wider in order to keep the proportion correct by their standards. So that's what drives, you know, our designs. And earlier on, we applied for and received the permit for a wall sign for above the main entrance, just to be sure they had something on the building for when they opened. So that's already been accounted for with the forty-six and a quarter square feet. So when we came to look at this sign here, one thing I'd like to mention is that its solid faces, which has cut through letters, so only the lettering lights up at night, so there's very little light emitted. It's become, it's very effective.
That's the, that's the sign that's on the left there. The sign that's shown on the left.
There's a microphone on the desk right there.
That's better? Yep. These are just the details about the sign, the sizes and such. So this sign over here is the existing monument from the previous tenant. And when we went to replace it, we needed to find out how much of a variance were we going to require. We knew we were getting very close to the property line. And what we found was that the existing sign is five and a half feet onto town property. The setback here is actually fifty-seven feet back from the curb, so you'd have room for the additional two lanes of traffic if you really decided to build it. So that's why we had this very unusual setback issue here with this property. So we managed to put the sign, we, we're asking for just two feet from the property line, because we're already almost sixty feet back from the road. If we did meet the ten-foot requirement, you know, we'd be even farther back. Also, on this site plan, you can see where the two directional signs are, one over on Carpenter Lane, and this one here off, uh...
Research.
Research Parkway. Of course, this one here is over two-hundred-and-thirty feet back from the road. So as you're driving down the driveway here, we wanted to keep the nine-foot size of it, so it would draw your attention that there's a directional sign coming. Again, all the white space is all defined by the brand book. So they tried to make the signs attractive, but we do come up with a nine-square-foot sign with just three-inch letters on it. To make the sign smaller, we'd have to make the lettering even smaller. So this is actually the one on Research Parkway. Oh, this one's off Carpenter Lane. And this is the one on Research Parkway, where you have to turn left to go into the visitor area or continue on into the shipping-receiving area. We feel it's very important to keep this one. You don't want tractor-trailers starting to turn into the front of the building, or have people trying to make turns in the back, you know, along with the trucks. And again, once the trucks do get back to the receiving, well, shipping and receiving area, just to avoid confusion that these docks are for shipping and receiving, I've seen places where certain, one side of the building's for shipping, the others for receiving, and to avoid trucks being, you know, confused, we wanted to keep this sign here, so they know that all these bays are accessible to them.
While you're on that, while you're on that sign, the shipping and receiving, if when trucks get back there, will any one of those, I can see the six bay doors accommodate either a shipping or receiving truck, or would you have to move around back there?
So there's, there's actually twelve loading docks right now, and we're only using four of them for shipping and receiving. So the first four, docks one through four, will be closed up. The, the remaining docks will be a trash compact, two trash compactors, and then the last nine through twelve will be actually shipping and receiving. And to answer your direct question, there will be two docks specifically for shipping and two docks for receiving.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind just turning back to the map of the site, the site plan? And I know you, you took us through with the renderings what each sign is, but if you could just point out on this map where each sign is... but if you could just point out on this map where each sign is and just briefly, this sign is to direct people to this location or these two locations, just so I can see from the overhead view where all the signs are.
Okay, well, this sign here is the monument sign, the main identification sign on Research Parkway. If you pull into this driveway here, again, 230 feet down, you come to this directional sign right here, just before the driveway that would turn into the visitor parking and main entrance to the building. The shipping-receiving area is actually off back here. Here's the outline of the building. The existing wall sign that was already approved sits over the front door here. And the second directional sign is here on Carpenter Lane, directing visitors into the main entrance this way. And this sign sits about 40 feet back from the curb.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ruzek.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy you guys came to Wallingford. Wallingford, what's the saying, we work for business, right? What could you guys do to work with us to get this signage? I mean, I like, I see, I see your point to the direction signs. Can they be a little bit smaller so we could get closer to this, the number that the planning office is looking for? And then the sign for shipping and receiving in the back, could we make that smaller to get a little bit closer to? I mean, I want your place to look right, I, I agree, I think you need the direction signs, you know, people come in, they're they do get lost, there's so much things going on. I, I agree with all that, and I don't want to hinder your business, believe me when I tell you that. But I also like, do you think we could kind, kind of try and get closer to the number that the planning office is looking for? I mean, I know we're probably going to have to meet somewhere, happy in the middle somewhere, but if we could...
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Bob and I did talk, I think the shipping and receiving sign that's out back is, is fairly obvious when a truck pulls in that that's shipping and receiving. We could, we could maybe shrink down that sign and maybe put smaller signs on the actual doors instead of a large sign over the four docks. And I don't know, Bob, if you did some calculations of what those would have to be to, to fall within the criteria or not, or that's something we could take a look at? But yeah, to address your question, I think we could do something with that shipping and receiving sign.
I've seen a lot. Most places, I mean, you, I understand the sign up there, but a lot of places just, most truck drivers are going to realize that that's shipping and receiving. But the only thing, if you have mandors, you know, with the stairs, those can get confusing. I can see a smaller sign saying shipping and receiving there with maybe hours of shipping and receiving. I've seen that a lot, so that would probably help in the whole scheme of things with a sign above your mandor, wherever you want them to enter, shipping and receiving, and, you know, maybe you could do away with that big sign and get the number down so maybe you could keep your bigger directional signs or, you understand where I'm trying to get to?
No, I understand. So that's something we could take a look at, right?
Yeah, it was interesting, it was interesting that the size of this sign, 30 square feet, is exactly the amount over the total sign area that we're requesting a variance for.
So I mean, if you, I understand you're going to need, and it is good to have signage, you know, this is the, because if you got three or four mandors back there, and, you know, you don't want somebody walking in all the way down the other end and having to walk up, if you've got forklifts or something going back and forth, you know, you don't want, you want to keep them out of that area. So I mean, I understand you're going to need a sign above where you want the truck drivers or UPS or whoever's coming in. So I mean, I know you're going to need that, I just, like I said, I, I think that would be better for you guys, and you can keep your direction signs of some sort, help in the front of the building. I think it looks nice, too.
I agree.
Now, if we, if we redesigned this into something that goes over each door, then that means coming back through again for...
Well, you don't really need one over each door, you would just need it over by the, the man walk-in door, shipping and receiving, I mean, right?
I think we'd want to still identify which loading, there's, again, there's, there's 12 there, four will be closed up. There'll be a couple others that will be open. Maybe we number the doors, just 1, 2, 3, 4, and, but I guess that still falls under the signage square footage if we put a number on the door, is that considered as a sign?
If it's a sign, it's considered a sign, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
So if it's a decal on the door?
Yeah, Amy, can we have some clarification on that, please?
First of all, you will not have to return to the zoning board of appeals if there isn't, there are three separate variances being requested here. And if there is some means of reducing, you still have to have a sign permit, still needs to happen following this. So your exact signage and the details will still go through the normal signage process, as did the wall sign that you've already been permitted for. There's three separate variances, there's the total ground signs, there's the total area of signs, and there's the setback. So first of all, we're voting on three things separately. So if we were to deny the total sign area, they would be restricted to 125 feet of signage versus 155 that they're asking for, 30, and then their designs would need to comply in their permit with 125 square feet.
Well, so the...
So you would be, if you're questioning the sign area, which is what we seem to be having the discussion regarding, and whether we can scale back the sizing of the shipping-receiving signs or create some smaller ones versus one larger, but we're, we're discussing the area options. So that's one variance. So the other two can be, are going to be voted on separately.
Right, okay, but back to the question of the
Yep.
If they were to put, what do you think, in numbers on doors, or if you had a sign and it said shipping-receiving doors 1 through 4 or whatever, and that, and that they lettered the doors, that's not really considered signage, is it?
All signage will still need to be permitted. So if that was an alternate plan to this shipping and receiving sign that totaled the area they're allowed, all they need to do is get a sign permit for it, you would be denying the variance for the area. They can submit some alternate plans for, directly with their sign permit. For four separate smaller signs, they still have the same square footage to operate with, no matter what the number of signs on the wall are, per bay versus one sign.
Right.
And that still needs to be applied for. You're not deciding their exact signage. They're asking for a variance against the, the total area.
Well, I understand what you're saying, is they're going to have to figure out what signs are going to work in their, in their square footage, but but to try and get a number that we're closer on is what, so the question was, was if they numbered the doors, is that included in, that isn't included in signage? Is it if they put a sticker on a door that says number four?
Not a numbering is not going to be, but identifying is, there is a 30-foot wall sign for shipping and receiving, the amount they're asking, extra. If we cut that down by a foot, you'll save 10 feet right there. If we reduce to two directional signs from nine square feet apiece down, we can come up with the whole 30. There are, there are options which would reduce, which would eliminate the need for that variance.
So what you're saying is if we reduce it, if we just deny that, they can come up with some sort of plan?
They still need to submit a plan.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I just have a question. The directional signs, how, what is, how big are those each?
They are three feet by three feet, nine square feet.
Okay. Because I think, I think at least one of these, I'm thinking of, because it's a corner lot and because, I mean, if it weren't a corner lot, you wouldn't, you certainly wouldn't need two, or if you didn't have two entrances, you may not need any, you'd have one entrance. So I think the, the fact that it is a corner lot requires you to have those two sides that you normally would not have to have. So if that's making it go over 18 feet right there just because of the land, which I think, you know, because the land is the way it is, that's, that's kind of dictating that you need those, so I mean, I'm not overly concerned with that. I did drive by this morning, and I think it's necessary that you have those. And I, I know we talk a lot about traffic flow, a lot of applications, and, and those are certainly necessary. So I would hate to see you take away, you know, one of those or both of those, you know, to get under the the area, and then, you know, we have a problem where, with traffic and, you know, people not knowing where they're going. And then, as far as the, the large sign, the main sign, I just want to make sure I understand that you're actually reducing the setback on that, correct? The current sign is...
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's actually coming, I mean, it's still not compliant, but it's becoming more into compliance on the current sign?
Right, removing the outside edge of it about seven feet in away from the road.
From where it is now, seven feet from where it is now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants?
Chairman, through, through you to Amy and discussion, I guess, the discussion that we've had so far now, I guess we would be able to come more in compliance with the, what both sides are looking for, with the shipping and receiving sign. So if we, if this particular variance here on the total signage, if we were to deny that, that particular portion of it, and say hypothetically that the other two were approved, the applicant then would have to come back to us with a revised signage plan? Or would he set the, they would have to come up with one more that is more respectable to the 125 that we're looking for? So say that they come in at 135, they would have to show at the next meeting then what they want to do? Am I correct?
If they can show something significantly different than is proposed.
Significantly.
Also, we are, we're mixing apples and oranges here. The two directional signs are extra ground signs, that's a separate variance. By denying the total sign area, you're not denying them the ability to have additional directional signs, should you approve that.
Okay.
As, as discussed, and perhaps hardship can be displayed there to, to need the, the two extra signs. Hardship cannot be determined for why we need more space in signage than is allowed. That's what the office is proposing, that they can subscribe to the maximum allowable signage and still gain, if you approve the other two variances, the setback, encroachment, and the extra signage. This, the area would be in question, it would have to be redesigned to comply with 125 feet maximum that they are allowed. We were, the office was just suggesting some options and where they could shave off some, just to show that some options could exist to comply.
I noticed in the beginning Thank you. I noticed in the beginning of your presentation, you had said something about your, your name now is, it's a branded name and it's been an updated thing, so in other words, you're marketed for a certain type of exposure to the sign, in other words, you just can't make the sign any size, correct?
Right, so GKN...
So how much of the application now is, is determined that it has to be a certain size? Trying, trying to help you here, and I'm trying to get...
Right, so I think what Bob was getting at, we have a certain branding style that we're, we're trying to follow throughout GKN, GKN was worldwide. So if we, the size of the font and the size of the lettering, the type of lettering kind of dictates the size of the sign. But something like shipping and receiving, we could change that a little bit, as, as Amy was suggesting. We could make that, I think it's 3 by...
It's 3 by 10.
3 by 10, we could shrink that down a little bit to get closer to the total square footage allowed, the 125. And so I was just asking Bob, if we just brought that down to maybe two, you know, what is that sign going to look like? Is it going to look too busy if we bring the GKN Aerospace down closer to the shipping and receiving name? What is that going to really look like? But I, I think there are options that we could do with that sign. And plus, it's in the back of the building, it's not a lot of exposure really just to the truck drivers coming in. And it's really just identify which doors we want them to pull the back their trucks into. Thank you. I think the front monument and those directional signs are really more critical to us.
Go ahead. Just one, one more question for the applicants. If we were to modify your, your variance request for the total signage area to reflect a reduced shipping-receiving sign in the back of the building, I understand, you know, it's a little bit on the fly right now. Do you have any idea of around what you, you might need to still conform with your style guide, but still be reduced, just for the purposes of us being able to, you know, make a, make a motion that's reasonable?
Yeah, so it'd be like 16, maybe like 16 square feet instead of the 30 proposed?
Additional 16, okay, thank you.
Saving some 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So where are we at now?
You tell me.
We're doing all this, we're doing all this talking and there's no proposal here.
There's no proposal. You either can approve or deny with certain conditions each of the three variances. And they, and any denial, they certainly have a right to reapply with something different.
It's happened before, I don't see why it can't happen now.
Mr. Chairman, may I? I, I don't think I can make a motion, but I just wanted to maybe make a recommendation tonight. I think they said they were willing to, where you say you were willing to reduce the sign by 16 feet? Or, or the sign would be?
Would be 16.
Would be 16 feet.
Reduction to 14.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't know if anybody would, would like to go along with this and potentially make a motion, but I think going along with what Mr. Ruzek said, if they're willing to kind of meet us, I think what might be fair would be for the second variance request to approve it, but instead of 155 feet, we reduce it to meet what they are willing to reduce that sign by. You know, thus making it a little more compliant. Again, I think because of the hardship of having the, the need for the two directional signs, that basically forces them to add 18 feet of signage, whereas if there were not, if it were not a corner lot... were not, if it were not a corner lot, they wouldn't need the two signs. So I, I would see that as a fair compromise and it, it at least lessens the, the square footage, so just my, my opinion on that, if, if anybody cares to, to use that for a motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can proceed, I think we got an idea with what we're gonna.
Sure.
Sure. Well, we're ready to start for motions?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I, I think we're still in the public hearing. Yeah, that's what I was, you wanna close the public hearing?
I thought I already did, no? I'll close the public hearing, there's no one here to, in favor or against it anyway, so it's closed.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the setback application to restrict constraint of trade, I believe that's.
Here, a second.
Motion to approve Mr. Disjardins.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Chairman Bernie.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, on application seventeen oh twenty-eight, the total signage area with a lot of discussion up here, back and forth, and I believe we're all in agreement that this property having two entrances and being up there on Research Parkway and we're gonna lower the square footage to one-forty, we believe that's a, because you need the extra signs and that would give you just enough, I think, I think, to do the rear, some sort of sign over your door. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the total signage area, but down to one-hundred-and-forty square feet. Again, to restrict constraint of trade, I believe it's.
Motion to approve Mr. Disjardins.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Chairman Bernie.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the final one, total allowable signs, I'm gonna make a motion to approve that one with the three proposed signs.
Motion to approve Mr. Disjardins.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Chairman Bernie.
Yes. So your, your application is, is basically it's approved, the first, the first variance that you're looking for is approved, the second variance, we reduce the square feet from one-hundred-and-fifty-five to one-hundred-and-forty. And the third one is, is the three signs are still allowed, are allowed, okay?
Yeah, right, thank you.
And you, you're, you're all set.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming to Wallingford.
Hey, do we have a motion to approve last month's minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.